We will conduct a brief legislative caucus to review our meeting agenda and then we will proceed with our legislative session. So immediately following caucus, I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Parker will lead us in roll call. In the absence of Councilwoman Daniels, whose absence is excused, I will lead the invocation this evening, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Jones. We do not have any communications this evening. We will then open the floor to courtesy of the floor. Then the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. We have one committee report, which will be delivered by our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, on the work session of February fourth, two thousand and twenty five. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. Resolution four of two thousand and twenty four, we will vote upon. Resolution five of two thousand and twenty five, we will suspend the rules for a brief discussion and then we will vote upon. Resolution six of two thousand and twenty five, we will move to the Public Safety Committee. Resolution seven of two thousand and twenty five will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution eight of two thousand and twenty five will move to the Administration Committee. And resolution nine of two thousand and twenty five will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty five will move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay. Any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. The time is six oh four PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels is excused. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present. Thank you. As Mr. Parker noted, Councilwoman Daniels is excused this evening. I will lead the invocation in her absence. Please keep the following residents, families, and friends in your thoughts and prayers in the coming weeks and months ahead. Ms. Lorraine Lawson, she was a proud John Harris High School pioneer. She was a member of the class of nineteen fifty seven. Ms. Carol Ann Wilkins was a graduate of Harrisburg High School. She was employed by Rite Aid Corporation where she retired. Ms. Wilkins enjoyed playing bingo and socializing with her peers who lived in Jackson Towers. Elder Alista Waters, affectionately known as Ms. Tiny. She held many jobs over the course of her professional career. She worked for the federal government where she retired. She was a beautician, who owned a beauty salon. She owned a bakery, and she was a daycare director. Ms. Waters, also known as Half of Less Than Tiny's and The Carousel, that were two black-owned businesses people frequented for a good time. Ms. Mamie Williams received her formal education through the William Penn High School. She earned an associate's degree in social work from HAC. Ms. Williams served as the first black woman supervisor within the Water Department and the first black woman director for the Human Relations Commission of the City of Harrisburg. Ms. Lori Jenkins was educated in the limestone Maine school system. She graduated cum laude with a BA in Political Science from the University of Southern Maine. She later received her Juris Doctorate Degree from the University of Maine School of Law, a MA in Public Policy and Management, and a PhD in Public Policy and Management from the University of Maine. She was a brilliant woman who excelled in various roles. She was a self-employed attorney at Future Foundations. Mr. Brian Pendleton was a self-employed barber in Harrisburg and a mentor for children at Breaking the Chains. He was a barber to many, a coach, and a team player. Please join me in a moment of silence as we remember these residents and keep their families and friends in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in this bill, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. We do not have any communications this evening. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay.
This is courtesy?
Yes.
I am Jeff Glad. I currently reside at three twenty-two North Second Street. Until very recently, I was previously residing for twenty-three years at six sixty Boas Street. I have filed two tenant landlord complaints with the Harrisburg Bureau Codes. One complaint in November of two thousand and twenty-three for my first add- for my prior address, and one complaint January two thousand and twenty-five for my current address. While the issues were different between the buildings, one building was three hundred and sixty apartments. The current building is about a hundred and forty apartments. The results were similar in terms of my complaint. No action was taken, i.e. no citations was written to either landlord, both of which I understand to be out of state. Both complaints related to building condition not up to Harrisburg code. I recently received a text message stating that someone in the Codes Bureau, quote, admitted it, meaning citations, rarely does anything to the landlord, unquote. That statement suggests to me that the city may rarely write code violations. If the city does not initiate a code vi- a code violation, then courts cannot be invol- courts cannot be involved and penalties cannot be assessed. Section eight dash one-one-five point nine-nine cannot be implemented if there's no citation to start the process. How can a landlord ignore a citation? The city can fine and potentially imprison the landlord. I have come before this council four times, June, July, and September of last year. I come before you now. In my experience related to separate large apartment buildings, I conclude that the city, the city's tenant landlord complaint system is seriously broken. The landlord apparently convinces the city not to issue a citation on the promise that the landlord will do something. The landlord avoids monetary penalty and possibly imprisonment. If only traffic motor vehicle citations were so easy to evade. This Bureau of Code system needs a thorough audit. I know that because my business for the last twenty years was auditing for major global multinational companies. Thank you very much for the opportunity to expound. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
I'm a very visual person. My name is Deb Wire. I also live at Harmony Towers, three twenty-two North Second Street. I'm in apartment fifteen oh six. And I have hot water. Twenty of my neighbors do not, and they have not had hot water anywhere from three to six months. Let me repeat that. Twenty of my neighbors have not had hot water for three to six months. You'll see in my picture here, our management company is in San Antonio, Texas. Our owners are in New York. And just like Mr. Glad explained, I was told by City Codes that they were holding off citing them because they've now finally, after months, submitted a, what do they call it, a statement of repair. We were told by our building office staff, nothing until last Monday. They put a notice in everybody's door, and it said that the part was on back order. And that was the first time, February, that anybody from our office has notified tenants. The office manager spoke to me on Friday to tell me that they've actually had the part. It isn't on back order. It's been sitting there, waiting for someone to put it together and install it. Our office manager said that. So the next, well, that same afternoon, a Cordia van was in our parking lot. And I asked the staff what was happening, and she said they were putting it in, and he was going to stay until it was done. Well, there's still no hot water, and it's not done. And again, because we got vocal and got newspapers involved and Facebook, all of a sudden, then they wanted to be vocal about this. We have been sending messages to the management company in San Antonio, Texas for months and not getting responses. We're talking about senior citizens, disabled people, and veterans. I don't think that's how the city wants to treat those members of our community. So I beg you to do something. I don't want to be here tonight. I did not want to do any TV interviews. I thought by contacting the Attorney General's Office, HUD, City Codes, Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency that holds the mortgage on the building, and Lynn Management, I was so naive. I thought it would be taken care of. And I've been involved for a month now. I have hot water, but I'm here speaking on behalf of my neighbors who aren't able to come, might have, just be scared, you know, that they might not have a place to live if they get vocal about it. Please get hot water going in our building. Please don't walk away tonight and do nothing about it. I don't know what you're able to do. I see a Building and Housing Committee Chair. I'm hoping maybe you're part of what we need. It's been three to six months, and everyone in here is going to go home, except these two people and the other eighteen back in my building, and they're going to have hot water. You're going to be able to do your dishes. You're going to be able to get a hot shower or a tub, and most of our people need baths because they can't stand in the shower. They can't boil water and carry it to their bathroom. Please hear what we're saying. Please hear what we're saying. Please.
Yes, if I may, Ms. Um, yeah, one of the things, I'm very familiar with Mr. Glad as well. I'm very sorry to hear that this is happening, but one of the things for council, though, we really don't have enforcement powers. But we, I definitely, I believe that all of us do support your efforts in getting this problem resolved. So we definitely will be able to talk to who we need to talk to and see if we can have some type of influence on this.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
I do. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And may I ask a question for her? This, um, this phone number, can you be reached at any time during the day, or is there a time?
Except for Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays. I work. Yeah, but any, any other time.
This is terrible because, yeah, you should be able, somebody should have been done. This is the first time I heard about this. Six months, no hot water?
Yeah.
This is the very first time that I've heard about this, and, yeah, this is ridiculous that senior citizens can't have access to hot water, so.
Two of our people join gyms because they have arthritis and just to go get a hot shower. They shouldn't have to put out money for that. And then I was told by City Codes, well, you should get your, get their rent in escrow. Can you imagine this generation trying to explain to them how to do that? And why should they have to? They just want what everybody else has. What, what they're entitled to is hot water.
Yeah, our City Codes Department should be able to enforce this like expeditiously. I don't understand why they can't.
And I know he has, and, uh.
We can't enforce, but.
But you can't believe what you're hearing.
I can't believe it. I haven't heard this.
About the part being on back order on a Monday, and then Friday I'm told, it's not on back order. We've had it. So that's also very frustrating. You can't believe what you hear unless you're going to back it up and follow through and get the truth. You just can't believe what you hear, and that's what, what we feel City Codes is doing. Just letting Lynn Management talk to them and tell them, okay, you know, this is what we're going to do, and then not following up. I'm following up. I used to want to own my own detective agency, so I call anybody. I mean, and I get people to talk to me, so, you know, you, you just can't believe what they're telling you unless they can back it up with a document.
Do you mind waiting until after the meeting so that we can speak to you further about?
I do not mind. It's bingo night, and I hold bingo for my residents.
Uh-oh.
But my son and his girlfriend are there doing it, so I'm just, I'll message him and say, I'm going to wait. I would gladly do that because we need to fix this.
Hopefully, it won't take too long.
That's okay. No, I appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
That's crazy. I don't need four minutes because they pretty much said everything that needed to be said. I am a resident of the building. My name is Julia Del Toro. I work for the State of Pennsylvania, PHFA. I'm sixty-five years old. I have not had hot water in six months. I am one of the ones that have joined the gym, LA Fitness, to take a shower. I have arthritis on both of my knees. I need a knee replacement, and I refuse to get it, especially because you never know what can happen. Some people get lucky and some people don't. This man is seventy-seven years old, I hope you don't mind, and we've been living here with no hot water, and it's not safe because not only that we cannot take a shower, we can't even do our dishes and disinfect them correctly. Cold water doesn't clean dishes. I'm homeschooled, you know, and we complain and complain, and it has gone on deaf ears. We were Presbyterian apartment, and even then we had issues, but not as bad as they are now. We no longer are owned by Presbyterian, which was for the elderly. Now it's called Harmony Tower. And like she stated, Deb, who's a resident there as well, they are based out of Texas. And I did research on them, and they're slum lords. They've been sued from different buildings that they have worked in other states. They just took over our building last year in February. And ever since they did that, the privileges and the things that we've had have been taken away. Like she said, the gym, we have a small gym for the residents to work out. Everybody has their own key to let themselves in. The gym is closed. We have a computer room. The computer room is also closed because they stated that the elderly were watching pornography, whatever. Anyway, people still need it for other things. The upstairs, we have a penthouse. We used to use the penthouse for events, for like special occasions, Father's Day, Mother's Day. All that is off limits. We can't use it anymore. We also had, because now that the building is no longer a senior building and it's open to the public, you can be eighteen and over as long as you qualify to live there. We have a lot of crackheads that have moved in, a lot of homeless people, and the building has really, really has gotten dangerous, especially for the elderly. And we had police patrol in the building. They would come around once a day, you know, and it was just nice to have them there, you know, you feel safe. But they did, they did away with that, the new owners. So there's a lot of things that have gone bad since we've had this new owner, and I really feel bad for the residents. I mean, I'm very lucky that I can take a shower at the gym, but more than seventy percent of the residents are elderly. They don't leave their house. They're in canes, they're in walkers. It's hard for them to get around, and let alone take a nice shower. You know what a shower does, a hot shower? It makes you feel good. It's therapeutic, you know? I like to get my bubble bath going with my oils and feel good, you know? It's just sad. It's a very sad situation. I'm glad that Deb and this other resident who is new have stepped up to the plate because I have done it with the office. I have called the corporate office, and it's all gone on deaf ear. They really don't care. The last thing the office told me, what do you expect, Julia? It's an old building. It was built in nineteen sixty-eight. I'm older than that building. I want my hot water. You guys have a good day, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session of January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We have one committee report this evening that will be delivered by our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, on the work session of February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. Please excuse my voice. I have a little bit of a cold. During the work session of February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Resolution four and five of two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution four of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution ratifying the two thousand and twenty-four application for the recycling development and implementation grant under section nine oh two of the Municipal Waste Planning, Recycling, and Waste Reduction Act one oh one for the City of Harrisburg and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to execute any and all forms required relating to the subsequent award of two thousand, excuse me, two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new leaf truck. We had a presentation from the Director, Dave West, on this resolution. There was a question from council about where the remaining funds needed for the total cost of the truck would come. Director West said the funds would come from the Public Works budget and also noted that they were able to get the total cost of the vehicle down even lower than the original cost they expected in order to save the city some more money. I asked my colleagues to support this resolution. Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five, it's a resolution approving the first proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of certain two thousand and twenty-four budget year incumbent commitments and to reaffirm certain two thousand and twenty-four capital project appropriations as amended. We had a presentation, bless you, we had a presentation from the County Manager, Brian McCutcheon, and Budget Manager, Timothy Brooks. This is a pretty standard exercise that we do annually to bring forward money budgeted in last year's budget that was not expended in that fiscal year, but will be spent in this fiscal year. We did have a question regarding funds not spent in last year's city council budget for the youth commission staff, and if that money would be able to be rolled forward as well. The Law Bureau said that's something that could be done, but we need to be amended to this resolution. I asked my colleagues to support this resolution as well, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution four of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution four of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution ratifying the two thousand and twenty-four application for the recycling development and implementation grant under section nine zero two of the Municipal Waste Planning, Recycling, and Waste Reduction Act. Act one zero one for the City of Harrisburg and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to execute any slash all forms requiring relating, required relating to the subsequent award of two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new leaf truck.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, and concerns related to Resolution four of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution four of two thousand and twenty-five passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays with one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the first proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of certain two thousand and twenty-four budget year incumbent commitments and to refer, reaffirm certain two thousand and twenty-four capital project appropriations as amended.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for a brief discussion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have before us Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five, which Vice President Green included in her committee report. I'm just going to call upon Mr. McCutcheon to just note the updated exhibit for the meeting record, please.
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Supplemental schedule, Exhibit C is provided to you this evening, reflecting a proposed budget adjustment related to the city council's budget unit involving the footnote description there expresses the nature of the adjustment for accommodating the request for part-time advisors to assist with the youth commission. So the total requested ask on this is ten thousand dollars in the applicable lines, which, which also includes the payroll tax expense, the FICA portion. So those two amounts together make up the first two lines, increasing the temporary and the payroll tax expense line by ten thousand dollars collectively. And then it's funded or resourced by the indicated revenue line there coming from the state grants fund, general revenue for the, for the general fund. So that's the, the resource offset for the proposed increase.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, did you have any questions? I know this amendment, you offered this amendment.
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you, Mr. McCutcheon, for explaining that. I don't have any questions. I just appreciate the Law Bureau and yourself getting this amended so we can start getting advisors for our youth commission, get our youth involved in our city and in their own local government. So thank you.
Yes, understood.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Madam President, just for the record, since there aren't minutes from the work session, there is, as we discussed last week, a corrected Exhibit B because the second page was missing from the original one that was posted, just so that's in the minutes.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
My tone moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have before us Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five as amended. Mr. Parker, could you please read it one more time?
Certainly. Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the first proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of the certain two thousand and twenty-four budget year incumbent commitments and to reaffirm certain two thousand and twenty-four capital project appropriations as amended.
Thank you. Are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five pass.
Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including one excused absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution six of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution six of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with WCA Public Safety Assessments for the purpose of providing psychological testing and assessment for the city's Bureau of Police.
Thank you. Resolution six of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Safety Committee. Resolution seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution seven of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution appointing Robert C. Kennick the second, Director of Financial Management for the city of Harrisburg, to serve as the Dolphin County Tax Collection, Tax Collection Committee Delegate for the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution seven of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eight of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Robert C. Kennick the second to serve as Director of Financial Management for the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution eight of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Samuel F. Solcosky to serve as Business Administrator for the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-five will also move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution of the city council of the city of Harrisburg reestablishing Hot Spot Saturdays, a community beautification and public safety initiative designed to encourage city residents to participate in six community cleanup events throughout the summer of two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is six thirty-five PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.